All right, good evening. I'd like to call to order the May, March, the March, or the April 8th, 2024 City Council Meeting. I'll get it right. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani-Glu.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor. Uh, Councilmembers Jackson and Spatafor are absent. We have six members present in quorum.
All right, thank you.
And we are to the, um, meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right, are there any council members that would like to have someone remembered at this time? Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk.
Um, a friend of mine, Stephanie McLean, passed away in the past few days. She had not lived in Lansing, uh, for a number of years, but she was a previous, very active member of our community. She was involved in many political campaigns and human rights campaigns. She was a leader in, uh, Michigan Pride and Lansing Pride, uh, and, uh, several statewide, LGBTQ rights organizations. So if we could remember her in our moment of silence, I would appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Carter.
Um, I would just like to thank, uh, council for your recent tribute. Um, I recently lost my future father-in-law last week, um, or the week before, and we had a wonderful celebration on his home going last week. So again, thank you, council, for your tribute.
Thank you. Any additional? All right, seeing none. Um, so please stand for a moment of meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have for your approval the council proceedings of March 11th and March 18th.
Vice President Hussein.
I would move for the acceptance of the March 11th and March 18th, uh, meeting minutes written.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations. Uh, we have, I believe it's going to be one, uh, special ceremony, a number of tributes in recognition of the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Clubs Forty-First Annual Founder's Day Awards Brunch Event.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
All right, if we have folks on hand, uh, for this, you can come on down into the well, and I'll join you momentarily. Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Fantastic. All right, so we have a tribute. This is in recognition of the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Clubs, uh, Forty-First, sorry, Annual Founder's Day Awards Brunch Event. Uh, and so what I'm going to do, we have a number of, uh, recipients, uh, that we have tributes for. We are actually going to approve those, uh, as part of our consent agenda. Uh, Ms. Sharon Civils is going to speak respectively to the recipients, um, on, on her organizations behalf. Uh, but I am going to, uh, read into the record, uh, the resolution that we have for the luncheon, uh, and then we will, um, allow these, uh, ladies to speak. Uh, it says, "Whereas the Greater Lansing Area Club of the National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's Club will celebrate their signature event, uh, the Forty-Fourth, sorry, Forty-First Annual Founder's Day Awards Brunch on April 27th, 2024, uh, women empowering communities, empowering lives. And whereas annually, the GLAC-NANBPC holds the brunch to recognize the Leela M. Eaton Scholarship recipients and the Leela M. Eaton Club Member of the Year, the 2024 ceremony will feature songstress Sharon Lawrence Taylor, keynote speaker Honorable Judge Kristen D. Simmons, and Mistress of Ceremonies Rochelle LaGrande. And whereas Robin B. Owens assembled interest women in Lansing to begin organizing the GLAC, and on July 28th, 1982, the club received its charter and became the last of 14 clubs organized by Leela M. Eaton. And whereas, the organization's goals are to provide opportunities for women to integrate their leadership skills, experience governance, and parliamentary procedure, and enhance their educational awareness of issues impacting the African-American community through volunteerism. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Lansing City Council congratulates the GLAC-NANBPC on their Forty-First Annual Founder's Day Awards Brunch and support their hard work, education in the Lansing area youth, as well as the community. We wish you continued success." And with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Hi, as he said, I'm Sharon Civils. I'm the first vice president for the Greater Lansing Area Club, and also I'm the chairperson for the Forty-First Founder's Day Award Ceremony. And in behalf of all our awardees, I want to thank this city council body for giving these tributes to Dr. Sarey Eaton for the Sojourner Truth Award, to Dr. Paul Elam for the Frederick Douglass Award, or Dr. Carmen Thomas for our Community Service Award, and for Fabette Ingram for our Business Excellence Award. We also have Youth on the Move scholarships to our very deserving students, which is Isabel Nixon, Bryson Brown, and Rena, I say her name, Natala. And they're very good students. They have 3.5 grade averages and above while serving the community and doing many, many greater things. I also would be remiss without introducing our First Lady Quante Williamson, who is also a member of the Greater Lansing Area Club, and she also sits on the Founder's Day Award Committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Any comments, council? Uh, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, first I want to thank folks that, uh, came up, uh, to our, actually to Pleasant Grove Homes for the, for the annual Southwest Action Group cleanup. It was incredible. I think we had, God, I don't know, maybe 55, 60 folks, uh, on hand. Uh, we were able to, uh, do, uh, just a number of projects, uh, in and around Pleasant Grove Homes. Uh, we were actually able to extend further southwest, um, and I think there were cleanup efforts at, uh, at Waverlyian Homes, uh, at Waverlyian and Jolly. Uh, so again, just a tremendous effort. Yeah, it was really a collaboration between, uh, the Southwest Action Group and the Churchill Downs Community Association. So we want to say thank you to those folks. Um, our next constituent contact meeting for the third ward will be April 13th, 10:00 to 12:00 noon, so that is this Saturday. That's, uh, sorry, at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center, uh, at 5825 Wise Road. Uh, we're going to focus in on, uh, the budget, uh, as recommended by the administration, uh, kind of our process that we're going through in terms of city council. And then we also have some folks, uh, that will be on hand to talk about economic development projects. Um, as an example, 820 West Miller. So we'll actually have the new owner. Um, this is the, uh, kind of blighted commercial property, uh, at, in the, kind of the southwest corner of, um, or I shouldn't say southwest, it's actually the northwest corner of, uh, Miller in, in South Washington. But in any event, uh, they will be there to discuss, uh, plans with regards to these economic development, uh, kind of projects in southwest Lansing, uh, so we hope to see you there. Uh, Churchill Downs Community Association will be meeting, uh, Tuesday, April 16th, at 6:30 PM. That is at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center, uh, located at 5825 Wise Road. So if you're part of that association, we hope to see you there. Uh, also, there will be a candidate's, uh, forum for the Charter Commission on April 17th, uh, and that is a collaboration between the Churchill Downs neighborhood, as well as the Lansing Eaton Neighbored Organization, uh, neighborhood. That will be, again, at the Alfred Schmidt South Side Community Center. Uh, and according to the flyer, this is an in-person event only, uh, and will allow participants to engage candidates, help shape the future of Lansing governance, and learn about the intricacies of charter, uh, revision. So we hi- highly recommend, uh, that you attend that forum. Uh, Luton, the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association has actually been recessed for the last couple of months. They will be meeting again, uh, next Thursday, April 18th, at 7:00 PM. That is at the Mayflower Church, uh, 2901 West Mount Hope Avenue, uh, which is at the corner of Mount Hope and Luton. Uh, and then lastly, I just want to thank folks. Uh, we had a number of people reach out, um, and ask how they could support, uh, the, the passage of House Bill 4012. Uh, and so we, uh, and I talked at length about, um, that bill, uh, and what it would kind of effectuate at the state level and, and what it would allow for, uh, in terms of local governments getting involved in, uh, in, in having a little bit more, uh, control, a little bit more autonomy over the speed limits in, uh, you know, positioned, I should say, along state trunk lines, uh, in, in municipalities or within their boundaries. Um, and so in any event, we had, uh, just a lot of correspondence, uh, that was conveyed over to the state legislature, and that did, uh, in fact, uh, pass, uh, both the House and the Senate. It was assigned into law by the governor on April 2nd. Uh, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any additional comments, questions, or comments from council? All right, seeing none. City clerk.
Um, thank you. I'll just take a moment and, uh, announce, uh, once again, we are continuing to send out absentee ballots for the upcoming May 7th election. Uh, there's still plenty of time to get an absentee ballot. Uh, the easiest way to find out how is go to lansingvotes.gov and, uh, click on the, uh, Vote at Home tab, and it'll tell you all the ways that you can sign up, or you can, uh, come in person to either our City Hall location or, uh, location at, uh, 1221 Rio Road, the former Rio Elementary School. That's our election unit, uh, now. Um, we will be having, uh, early voting the two days before, uh, the two, the Saturday and Sunday before the election as well. So if you want to participate in early voting, uh, that will be the, uh, 4th and 5th of May, um, at our Rio Road location. Um, and of course, the, uh, polls are open election day from 7:00 AM until 8:00 o'clock PM. Uh, because school is in session, the school district asked us not to use their, uh, school buildings. So, uh, if you normally vote in a school building, uh, you should have gotten an email and/or a postcard, uh, letting you know where you vote for this election, so, uh, make sure you're aware of that. You can also double-check that, uh, through some links at lansingvotes.gov. Um, and with that, um, we are to, uh, speaker registration for public comment, uh, I'm sorry, we are to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience with a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Has two unique opportunities coming up for citizens if they care to participate with us. The first one is in North Cemetery this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, and that's a cemetery and monument recording workshop, where you will learn the basics of cemetery survey methodology and documentation, using Michigan's Historic Cemeteries Preservation Guide as our reference, practical application of basic mapping techniques, photography, and headstone documentation. No cost, and all materials are provided. Pre-registration is required at our site, uh, our Facebook page at Lansing's, Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, or on our, uh, website at lansinglandsomefriends.org. The second opportunity is two weeks later in North Cemetery on April 27th at 9:00 AM, and that's an opportunity to learn how to clean monuments and markers correctly with the right materials and circumstances, and participate by cleaning veterans' headstones in that cemetery.
Thank you. Are there any other community event announcements? Okay.
Hello, um, my name is Anicia Dillard. I'm a, sorry, I have a note here. Uh, coming to you as a resident, but I'm also a member of a Take a Stand Sit-In Committee at Lansing Community College. I just wanted to share information with you all about our upcoming symposium this week. Um, the theme is investigating incarceration, artists and activists for healing and reform. Um, so the Take a Stand Sit-In focuses on healing through the arts and reform through activism with five unique sessions, featuring perspectives from guest artists, LCC faculty and staff, and a special collaboration with the Capital City Film Festival. It'll be two days, Wednesday, April 10th, from 2:30 to 4:45 at Central United Methodist Church in person. Um, that event is free to attend, and then also, all day on Thursday, that's a virtual session from 10:00 AM to 5:40 PM, um, with, uh, four WebEx sessions. Um, so you can just visit our website, takeastand.openlcc.net for more information. Thanks.
Thank you. Other community events?
Hello, Erica Lynn, a lifelong Lansing resident and regular attendee of the city council. Um, I also just so happen to be running for the Lansing Charter Revision Committee, and we are having, uh, what we are calling Charter Candidate In-Person Office Hours. Uh, we will have an in-person session this Wednesday, that's April 10th, from 6:00 PM to 7:45 PM at the Capital Area District Library downtown, um, in Room B, that's in the basement. Um, and this is really just an opportunity for folks to stop in and talk to several, uh, charter revision candidates at a time. Uh, very informal, just get to know us. Uh, we'll be giving information about the charter in general, about voting, uh, registering to vote, the special election, um, and again, also just to get to know us as candidates. So feel free to stop in anytime. Again, that's this Wednesday, uh, from 6:00 PM to 7:45 at the Downtown Library Branch in Room B. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, seeing none. Then we are to, uh, registration for public comment on legislative matters. So legislative matters tonight does include items, um, quite a few of them, 10 through 40 tonight. 10 through 40, um, and, uh, we'll give you about another, uh, one minute to, uh, jump up and get with Tag in the back to sign in. And by the way, I was remiss, uh, mentioning, uh, that I want to thank Tag for his, uh, several months of service. Uh, tonight is his last council meeting as, uh, as our intern, so thank you very much, Tag, for your help over this time. Um, and with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Schorr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a few updates reminders. One, uh, a week from today, April 15th, our yard waste, uh, pickup will start. So I know there are folks who put bags out. We certainly encourage folks to wait until April 15th, but on April 15th, our folks will be out there picking up yard waste, uh, as has happened each of the six years I've been mayor. I'm sure it'll be a little slow in the first few days because there are a lot of bags to pick up, especially when it's 72 degrees out like today. Um, but our folks will be out picking up. Um, I want to thank the 100 or so neighborhood advisory, neighborhood civic organizations that applied for our neighborhood advisory board grants. Uh, that's great, 100, uh, different applications all throughout the city, uh, so the board will be going through them, uh, starting now, and I see one of our board members in the audience nodding his head. So, some work to do, thank you. Um, I wanted to, to comment, uh, Councilman Hussein mentioned the, uh, the swag and Churchill cleanups. Thank you to everyone who came to those, um, and thank you to our, our Department of Neighborhoods Arts and Citizen Engagement who provided the, the supplies, uh, for those events. This is a great partnership between the city to provide supplies and our wonderful neighbors and volunteers to, to help clean up our city, so thank you to everyone involved. Um, I wanted to mention, I know we sent this out to council, but I'm not sure, uh, who's seen it in the media. Um, there have been a lot of questions about the west side, uh, and the median there and, and the roads. Um, we have heard from both supporters and opponents of the plan to shut down the south side and just have the north side operating to create more green space. Um, so we are, we are polling the residents of the, that neighborhood. Um, we are sending out postcards to folks both on the east side and the west side of MLK. Uh, the two options that they will have is just have the north side with five lanes, uh, two going north, two going south, and then in the middle, there'll be a median lane, uh, with green space, uh, or they can pretty much have it the way they have it now, um, and then not have the, the green space with a, a path on the, um, east side. So we are polling the neighbors. Uh, postcards went in the mail, I think Friday, um, letters with postcards, and they will have it this week. Um, so, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna wait and see what the, what the citizens have to say. Again, I've heard from both sides, so I'm, I'm curious to see how this comes out. Um, Thursday, April 18th, from noon until 2:00, will be our Legacy of Cesar Chavez Luncheon, uh, at the AC Hotel. Uh, Andres Chavez, who's the grandson of, uh, of Mr. Chavez, of Cesar Chavez, uh, will be speaking, so all are welcome, uh, again, Thursday, April 18th, from 12:00 to 2:00. And then one, uh, final announcement, um, that I was asked to share from our, our Office of Financial Empowerment. Um, for those out there who, uh, who have fines and fees, uh, our Office of Financial Empowerment is paying, uh, fines and fees for, uh, for folks, including Secretary of State reimbursement fees, um, for folks who have, uh, debt standing in the way of driving legally. Um, so, uh, if you do, you have to be a City of Lansing resident with no charges related to assault, weapons, or substance abuse use, or sales in the past 10 years, uh, but not including marijuana. Um, if you qualify, uh, please contact Charles at our Office of Financial Empowerment, 517-855-1635, and we can help you out. Um, that's what I've got, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, then we are to public comment on legislative matters. Uh, speakers will have up to three minutes to address the city council. Um, and again, uh, we are at the point in time in the agenda when, uh, it is the speaker's opportunity to speak, but it is not an opportunity for clapping or applause or other demonstrations from the audience. So our first speaker tonight is Emily DeVendor, followed by Tony Gant.
Hello, City Council, it's good to see all of you. Um, it has been a pleasure doing work with you so far, um, and I'm really excited about what we have to come. I am here to support the rest of my community in supporting the Fair Chance Resolution. I introduced this resolution at a state level. If you saw recently, the governor is, um, supporting our fair housing initiatives at the state level, and as you, you probably know, it is no secret at this point, because Lansing is as involved as it is, and I always am grateful for that, and as vocal as it is, we are also leading on housing in the state. I personally have drafted tens of bills related to housing. And I wanted to make sure that in addition to supporting this, you knew that within the next several weeks, several months, and through the end of the year, that we have a whole slate of pieces of housing legislation that you absolutely will want to support, and I will make sure you know about that. In terms of fair chance, though, it is an integral part of that larger, broader package to ensure housing accessibility for all of our residents, regardless of mistakes in the past, regardless of efforts toward rehabilitation. We want to make sure that rehabilitation and corrections actually means what it says. We want to make sure that we start telling the truth about reform. So in addition to doing a great amount, I'm trying not to swear y'all, thank you, a great amount of legislation on housing, we're also doing a little, a lot of criminal justice reform. I want to emphasize that without passing fair chance along with things like relocation fees, as long with things like guaranteeing a legal right to counsel for all of those with housing cases in rental situations, especially those facing evictions, in addition to reforming how, what, what we look at in terms of income and credit, we need to be making sure we're, we're, we are removing unnecessary and unfair obstacles to housing. Because that is a core part of this. We know we don't have enough housing. The housing that we have is getting old and needs to be invested in, and that we have a number of our individuals and neighbors who are homeless, who are really struggling. We have so much opportunity to take real responsibility in this community, and to do so fairly, fairly, reasonably, and compassionately. And one clear core way to do that is to ensure that citizens who are re-entering society have the support that they need. In addition to that, I want to assure you that I am looking at things like what kind of legislation would ensure that you can enforce your red tags, to make sure that there is a reasonable amount for, of time for review and to ensure that you are allowed into, into establishments for inspections. Um, I will make sure to stay in contact with you for those, for those further pieces of legislation. I would love to, to present to the Housing Commission again, and I also would like to extend the offer to invite in the Michigan Coalition Against Homelessness, whom I've been working with on best, best practices, uh, since I came into office and since I started working on housing during the foreclosure crisis in 2010, uh, because they are willing to offer an educational moment, and thank you for the grace, to, to help the City of Lansing and other cities that are working on encampments and weather sweeps our best practices, to understand what best practices are and how we can really help all of our neighbors. Please let me know if I can facilitate that for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Tony Gant, followed by David Ellis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, President Garza, Vice President Hussein, and honorable Lansing City Council members. First off, I want to say Happy Solar Eclipse Monday, right? It was a great, great Monday, right? Hope everybody got a chance to celebrate that. Secondly, I want to kind of talk about April, right? April was one of my favorite months, and I hope you all know how special April is, right? April is not only Autism, Autism Awareness Month, which is important for a son with, that has autism, right? So it's special. Not only that, it's Fair Chance Housing Month, right? The governor just issued a proclamation declaring that April is Fair Chance Housing Month for all the state of Michigan. President Biden issued a proclamation declaring that April is Second Chance Month for all of America, right? Why is this stuff even important, right? Why is it important to you, uh, amazing leaders of communities across the City of Lansing? Because in every one of your communities, there's somebody with a criminal conviction that's struggling to get their life back together. Every one of your communities, there's somebody like me with a felony conviction that spent 20 years in the Michigan Department of Corrections, somebody like me, right? That's trying to get their life back together, that's working hard, hasn't offended the laws, and just wants the same chance as every other American citizen, right? Every other American citizen. That's what Second Chances is about, right? We're saying that you do the crime, you do the time, and you get a chance. That's what fair chance is. You do the crime, you do the time, and you get a chance to a fundamental right that all humans should have, which is access to housing. Now, on the research, reverse side of that, if you all should choose not to act, what you're saying is, right, that we don't want safe communities. We want people locked out of housing. We want our communities to continue to deteriorate. We want people to continue to reoffend and return to incarceration. Because the most fundamental thing you need, once you're released, and even people that are never been incarcerated, the most fundamental thing you need is somewhere to live. You all speak through your resolutions. You have a chance tonight to speak clearly to the state of Michigan and say that you all prioritize housing for every human in the City of Lansing. I hope you all do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have David Ellis, followed by, um, Luna Brown.
Hi, David Ellis, resident of downtown. I'm going to be brief because I'm not going to be able to speak well on this compared to many of the much, much more qualified people here, but please support the resolution to support the fair housing bill. To me, I look at this and it's, it's a no-brainer. It's a simple first step to fixing a huge issue that affects many of our residents in Lansing and beyond in the entire state. It, it is an objectively good thing, and I just hope to see you guys do the right option with it. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, followed by Daniel Black.
Hi, uh, for a while now, I've been coming here speaking about homelessness within the queer community and how that affects us. And the, the Fair Housing Access Bill is, like, crucial for our community. There are many of us, like, I'm, I'm involved in the recovery community as well, and there are many of us, um, who can't get homes after we enter recovery. Like, we, we go to rehab, we enter recovery, we get clean, we do good, we do everything we're supposed to, but we still can't find housing because of our record, and it can take a long time to expunge any of that. And there are things that could be on that record from that period where people were using and that, that can't be expunged off their record. I, I have plenty of friends who have done or even are currently doing sex work to survive. And why are, are we punished? And why are we punishing these people more by denying them housing, forcing them into homelessness, and creating a system where, like, you're setting them up for relapse, you're setting them up for failure? And this is just how it affects, like, my recovery community I'm part of. And there are plenty of other communities, like, equally affected. The queer community is especially affected, and because of issues within our community. And this is just feeding into the homelessness crisis that we have right now. Like, we need to be able to get people homes, and the current system is set up to not allow that. And, yeah, we need to pass this. Also, support the firefighters, and I know the four items prior to Number 31 were all regarding the fire department, and we need to make sure we're supporting them, as well as our ambulance drivers and everyone else, because it's basic infrastructure that the city needs. And thanks.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Black, followed by Deshaun Bailey.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Daniel Black, City of Lansing resident for the last 47 years. I, as a resident, have been denied reasonable accommodations and reasonable modifications and accessibility for a good portion of my 69 years. Hence, I can appreciate the struggles of many of the incarcerated looking for passage of the Fair Chance Housing Resolution. Please, if you would, Council, please support and do what you can to allow passage of the Fair Chance Housing Resolution to become a reality for many of the incarcerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deshaun Bailey, followed by Mitch Rice.
Hello. My name is Deshaun Bailey, and I've been homeless for two years. It's hard to get any housing because of my record, and I'm just trying to better myself, but it's hard to do when you don't have a home. And I just want a second chance, and just to prove that I'm a better person and that I changed. And we need you to pass the Second Chance Bill. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Next, we have Mitch Rice, and then Daniel Arnold.
Again, as you said, I'm Mitch Rice. Thank you, Mayor, Council members, for allowing this public comment. As a member of Nation Outside, the voice of the formerly incarcerated, I am pleased and in support of passing the resolution, Lansing Fair Chance, at housing item number 31 on your agenda. This is a helpful step in the process to reduce discrimination and provide for a safer, healthier community. However, the City Council and administration needs to individually and collectively push the state of Michigan Legislature to move House Bill 4878 forward. Currently, it is stalled in the Housing Committee since late June 2023. Without this bill being passed, the resolution is a, quote, "nice gesture," but far from doing enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Arnold, followed by Jerry Norris.
Hello, Council and Mayor. I'm here to speak, Daniel, in favor of the Lansing Fair Change Housing Resolution. I've been in trouble before, and I've been shown mercy by the system, but, you know, some people really have a really hard life to get this opportunity, so I stand with these people to support Lansing Fair Chance.
Thank you. Next is Jerry Norris, and then Norma Bauer.
Hi, Jerry Norris, longtime Lansing resident, 2511 Eaton. Thank you for having me here. It's been a long time since I've stood at this podium and not been upset. I'm going to go with Anthony's energy today and welcome everybody, say hi to everybody. I think you guys are going to pass this. I'm excited about this. You know, Michigan's population is shrinking, our workforce development is hurting, our entrepreneurialism is hurting, we need more people, and every day, and that's not an exaggeration, sometimes I exaggerate, but every day, somebody walks into the Fledge, and I found out they have a record, they're an ex-offender, and I'm so amazed by some of the people. I don't know if Will's going to speak tonight. We've got, like, four people from the AARP that are in their 60s, in their 70s. They're the best volunteers, employees, whatever you want to call them, that we have at the Fledge. They come out with skills, they come out being mentors to young people that really make a difference, that really have an impact. And to think of them having to be unhoused, or to think of them having to be unemployed, I don't understand why anybody would ever fight this. I was taught in the 60s, in the 70s, in the 80s, that when you went to prison, you paid a debt, and when you got out, you were done, you were even. And I think if you pay your debt, then you should be able to do everything else that I can do, that all of you can do. And I just, I think it's an economic development, I think it's a financial decision, and I think that we spend a lot of time scared and fearful of people, and these are some of the best people I know. And if we really celebrate diversity, and we really want to know how to solve some of these complex problems, gun violence comes to mind all of the time when I'm dealing with ex-offenders. I need these people, we need these people, you all need these people, we need everybody, we need all hands on deck, and I really hope you do what I think you're going to do. I don't think this is a hard decision at all. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next is Norma Bauer, and then Walker.
I'm Norma Bauer, and I suppose some of you wonder why I turn my back on the flag. That's because it's hard for me to get down on my knee. I will salute the flag when there is justice for all. And so far, as you have heard, people who come back to the community after a time being incarcerated are not getting any justice. So I'm for that House Bill 4878. I'm for a resolution. You know, a resolution doesn't make any difference, you know? You just do what you just did with the one lady from the Black Leaders Club. So it just means that you think that the state should do what the state is already doing, as Emily told you, as Tony told you. So it doesn't make any difference, okay? So I'm also here to talk about Number 36, which is the appointment of some union guy. I should look it up. Dennis Parker, as Chief Labor Negotiator for the city. Well, maybe you don't know, or maybe you do, and maybe that's why he was appointed, that he's a big union guy. And I'm not opposed to unions. My dad was a union member for all his life, and union members like to work. So the union negotiators want to get the city to give big grants to their employers so they can build autos or do all the other things that big developers do, mill rights and auto workers. So, you know, it's a foregone conclusion that if you're a union guy and the employers have just given you a big break after the big strike, then you don't want to slap the hand that feeds you, right? So they keep getting a big grant from our strong mayor system here, and that money goes into their pockets, and they use it, and they like it. And they don't seem to care very darn much for the hungry people, the homeless people, and the returning citizens who can't find a place to live. So I got a problem with naming somebody who isn't really going to represent the city people, the residents who live here. And if you want a labor negotiator, I would hope that he'd be somebody who would represent all the people, not just people who are getting a good wage and want to work for the next three years. Does that make sense? I mean, I guess I'd like to have big grants, too, but so would the people with Section 8 vouchers, who can't get a place to live because it's instant, and they can't go back on their lease that says that they already paid for three months. So there's a lot of things that aren't right here, and I think maybe some of it has to do with the city charter as it exists. So I hope you'll look into Dennis Parker's qualifications and think of somebody else.
Thank you. Next is Walker, followed by Gregory Wines.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've seemed to have been here several times before, and it seems that I remember one time, the census was that this is a state issue, and this council wanted to avoid it. Well, now the governor has spoken out. I think that represents the state. But the bad part is, I also said, this is Lansing, the state capital. We need to lead the way. Fair Chance housing is needed. I stressed that, I stressed the conditions, and again, I said, we need to lead the way. Now we're coming in third. Everybody else has recognized the importance of this. Now it's your turn. You see what's going on in your streets. I had a presentation I wanted to send, showing slides of what I see while driving down the highways, Saginaw Streets, MLKs. So if I see it, you have to see it. Saginaw is not a backward street, MLK is not a backward street. I have seen people sleeping in the doorway of Rite Aid, sleeping on the ground, basically on the corner, I'll say Center Street and Saginaw Street, not back in the back corner, right out visual from the street. You have seen this. You had a chance to be my leaders, the City Council of the capital city. Now you're being the third party endorsing this, and I assume that you are going to endorse it. It's the only rational thing to do. I have not been able to present my presentation to any of the City Council. You say you guys are not acclimated to electronic media. This is 2024. Everything is electronic media. If you're not acclimated to it, then it's time we get acclimated to it. It's time that we come into today's society and make the changes that we need to make. I have one issue about MLK. We're talking about revising MLK multi-multi-millions of dollars, just to make it look different. Why don't we do something about Fair Chance housing and make a difference? Good day.
Thank you. Next is Gregory Wines, followed by Rita Dunlap.
Hello, Gregory Wines. How y'all doing? So I happen to be a paralegal for the juvenile lifer unit at the State Appellate Defender Office. Surprise, I'm also formerly incarcerated. Yeah, I spent about 29 years of my life in the prison system. I was incarcerated in 1993 as a 17-year-old juvenile. I returned to society August 23rd, 2022. You know what I needed? I needed a hand up, not a handout. Last year, I started applying for housing. I had housing prior to that, didn't have housing at that point. When I began applying, I realized I was going to get kicked out from the gate, and I had a job with the State Appellate Defender Office. Yeah, I got a check, just like you guys, from state government, and I was being denied housing. How crazy is that? I had stable employment, but I wasn't worthy of housing. I had a check, week in and week out, but I wasn't worthy of housing. Parolees and formerly incarcerated, they need a hand up, not a handout. That's what this resolution is about. That's what that legislation is about. I'm not asking you for a handout, I'm asking you for a hand up. I could be easily just like one of these gentlemen that spoke earlier and on the streets, but I'm not. You know why? Because one apartment village in the City of Lansing gave me a chance. He didn't care about my record. You know what he cared about? He cared about if I could make my rent. And every single month, I pay my rent early, early. He's told me time and again, I am probably the best tenant he's had. Go figure. 29 years in the prison system, here I am, best tenant, ever. Give us a hand up, not a handout. Pass the resolution, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rita Dunlap, and then Tricia Washburn.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, I'm a landlady in the Lansing area on the South End. Okay, I feel that no one should be denied the opportunity at housing in the beginning, because if you deny someone in the beginning, they have no chance of success thereafter. So I'm for the passing of the bill, okay? I'm more concerned what type of tenant the person will be than what happened in their previous life, because no progress will be made unless the past is forgiven. And I have had many successful ex-offenders, and I agree with what he said, that some of them have turned out to be my best tenants and are still there, okay? Now, we need more help in the interim, just not only ex-offenders, but everybody. We need to get some bare bones housing, more like a boarding house, until we can figure out how we could work with our stock and how we could make more reasonable housing. So that's something that will help the ex-offender, but not just the ex-offender. Now, the churches could get more involved in helping, too, to make the ex-offender someone that would be, I don't want to say more rentable, I don't mean it that way, but the churches could help welcoming the people to the ex-offenders so that it could help them when they go apply for a place that they, you know, would have some sort of a support system. Now, I, as a landlady, need help not accepting the ex-offender, but if I have a snafu or an issue or a problem, that's when I need the help. But I don't need to deny the person initially, but I might need some interim help in the beginning, maybe additional caseworkers, or, you know, the prison system, or however they integrate, you know, people in the system, okay? There is no feeling in the world like helping somebody become a success, and that's what I feel when you run to an ex-offender, that's what you're doing. And many, many of them are so grateful and so thankful. And it isn't just about renting to them, it's about renting to them and welcoming them in your rental community, and have other tenants feel the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Tricia Washburn, followed by Mike Lynn.
Good evening. I'm Tricia Washburn, engagement specialist with Nation Outside, and I'm here to speak on the Fair Chance Housing Resolution. I know you've seen me before, I know I've spoken on this before, and I know you have heard my story about me working as a housing navigator, trying to house homeless people, and watching for over two years, actually... Actually, about five or six years. I watched people get out of prison and got to know them and realized their disinterest in crime and their interest to work, get housing, and get a better education. We worked on it together. I worked with all of them tirelessly. And the answer was constantly thrown in their face over and over again, day after day. No, 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 no. Because of background checks, because of the felony charges and the misdemeanors. And they were all defined by a mistake they had made in the past. Lots of these mistakes were made 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago. And as I got to know these clients, not one of them were, always seemed like distrust people. They didn't even seem like the people that would take your purse, and they never did. And they never committed a single crime after that. And going through snowstorm after snowstorm in northern Michigan, following up with them, touching base with them, they slept outside in benches, in parks, and still, still, in the most desperate moments of their life, did not commit another crime. And constantly pushed to get housed. And constantly were told no. They had paid their debt to society years ago. They had apologized. And not only had they apologized, they had changed. And they still couldn't get the basic necessities of life to be successful. Studies show that people grow out of crime mostly as they age. Studies have also shown that when people get out of prison, when they are housed, stably housed, the recidivism rate goes down tremendously. And homelessness has increased 300% from the beginning of the 21st century. And we wonder why there's so much homelessness and why there's so much crime and why there's so much poverty. Because the people that maybe did commit crimes in their past don't get a chance to rise above it, rise above their worst days of their life and show them, show the world, that they can be better. Because we don't give them that chance. Please, please pass the Fair Chance Housing Resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mike Lynn, followed by Mark King Jackson.
Thank you. Real quick, city clerk. May 7th is approaching quickly. I think that the, the old ad is that we've done enough to get people out to vote is getting old. Our voter turnout is terrible in Lansing. I think the powers that be know it is. And I think we ought to do a better job from that position or we really need to start looking at other options for city clerk. I am somebody who keeps up with the vote. I understand what's going on with it, and I ain't seen nothing about it. I haven't heard anything about May 7th's vote. I know there's a presidential election coming up, but this is really important to our city. And I think it's almost tactical not to talk about it. So I think it's time to up that, that position on getting this information out. Outside of that, with the Fair Housing Act, I just, it's just disappointing that they gotta keep coming here. It's been almost two years with this stuff, which, uh... And it's always late. It's always Johnny come late with the council. Like, are the states gonna do it? Okay, let's jump on this thing and make, get our names in the conversation. So I'm not gonna talk a whole lot on that. This is pretty simple stuff. But I think if we're gonna do something, we should prepare for what the state is about to do. We know they're gonna pass this. So what do we have by way of policy to enforce it in the city of Lansing? I think y'all should really start working on that if we're gonna talk about something other than these ceremonial resolutions that y'all do. Outside of that, also another thing we'd do is reflect on how people can't run for office if they have a felony within 20 years. So if we're so progressive when it comes to this and we wanna write resolutions, let's change our own ordinances to affect change in that. And if it's something that's outside of that level, if it's state level or law, then let's change it there. I've got people that are in my community that really wanna get up here on this dais. We've, we've had to wait years to get them up here. I had another person who ran where he was just months within the range to be able to do so and got a bunch of flack on it because other people didn't know the law. But 20 years is the number. So outside of that, I gotta talk some systemic stuff. Jim Delain being an internal auditor, it's really, it's just sad that we keep recycling folks and people. And everybody has their reasoning on why they like the certain individual coming in. But everybody has a story about that person. I just can't take you serious. Like, we just can't find an internal auditor outside of somebody that's already been in the system, that's on the ethics board or, you know, it's been appointed by the mayor. Like, we can't find anybody that doesn't have some type of correlation or connection to the administration with that. And also with Gregory Venker in the city attorney's office, there's way too much defunctories come out of that office for y'all to bring somebody up from that battle buddy environment that was down there. I mean, can you just imagine how much quietness they had to? How many lip tightening they had to do to not sit up here and watch Smirka lie to y'all and threaten y'all? So you to talk about they're a good person or that you had conversations with them and they're a good individual? Kill that. But again, I grew up on the South Side. You can't play me. Dennis Parker, chief labor negotiator, I think, Adam. Don't say it behind closed doors. Say it right up here. The concerns that you have are the same ones we have. He guys are like, he can do really good for the unions or he can do really good for the city. And you know the mayor's gonna put nobody in place that's not gonna be beneficial to him. So there goes your answer.
Thank you. Next is Mark King Jackson, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening to the city council. Mayor, sure, how you doing? My name is Mark King Jackson. I am property manager and project manager for North American Property Management. I also represent Gridiron Marketing Group. And that is why I'm here tonight for agenda item number 33. So there, I see there's a lot of conversation tonight about fair housing and catering to those that have been underserved. The Gridiron Marketing Group has been rehabbing and refurbishing homes in the Lansing community since 2008. Their mission is to provide affordable and sustainable housing for the good people of Lansing, Michigan. The owner of the company is from the Lansing community and went to Lansing schools as a product of the community and has taken his own money and invested in his community where he lived to provide good housing. One thing that I'm here to talk about is that we've been assessed red tag fees for a property that we purchased from the Lansing Land Bank Ingle County Tax Auction in November of 2020. As you know, we were coming out of the pandemic and we made our best efforts, according with the ordinances of the city, to have timely work on this project. However, due to some of the inefficiencies in the building safety office, it has triggered these red tag fees, which has, which we feel is egregious and needs to be addressed. Now, we do understand why the red tag fee process is in place. And we understand that there are actors in, within the city who have not just been timely or responsive to the problems with their properties. I want to state for the record that the Gridiron Marketing Group has a stellar reputation in terms of maintaining their properties, paying their property taxes on time. And also, for the very people that have been speaking all night, we work with all kinds of people. We don't discriminate. We give people that second chance. And we would like to continue to buy more homes that are on that demo list and put substantial investment and make those nice living spaces for people. And we just need those fees to be abated. This has been discussed in the, in committee. We've had abatements before and on this very same project. And so we asked again for the additional fees to be abated. And we were met with resistance, which we don't understand. We do understand that the ordinances are in place. And from individual conversations with various council members, we do understand that. But in this particular case, we have gone above and beyond to make sure we're in compliance. This particular home has passed inspection. And we also have a tenant already. One of the units have already been filled. And so we would like for you guys to waive those fees for us, please, so we can continue to do good work for the city. Thank you.
Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Linda Epling.
Three issues tied to the budget considerations this evening. And the first one speaks to the concerns that were delineated by the fire chief about having so many ambulance runs compared to actual fire runs. I have asked him for a meeting and he has informed me that he will set up something through his secretary for the next several days. We will sit down and we will talk about the idea that I'm presenting that we look at having additional resources to take the EMS runs, which would be considered medical taxis. Other communities are doing this. And a medical taxi could be operated either by the city or by an outside agency like MMR. And what they would do is they would pick up those, what we term nuisance runs, where the complaints are such that most of them are often, I can't get to the hospital on my own, so I'm calling an ambulance. Or, you know, the persons just don't have a significant need for medical care, but they don't have means to get to a doctor or an urgent care clinic, so they call for an ambulance. The people on the medical taxis would be trained to evaluate these potential clients. So if there was a situation where somebody needed more advanced care, they could then call for the paramedics to come out. But a medical taxi service could eliminate a lot of the expense cost and disruption of services that is now taking place with all these quote-unquote nuisance runs. Similarly, with the police department, we could be looking at something other communities, again, are doing. And that is going to offering a reserve officers corps, where retired officers or people in training or people that have worked elsewhere and wanna pick up some hours but are not ready to go full-time can pick up hours as reserve officers for the city, taking the lower-level calls, the parking and the traffic calls, the calls for speeders, the calls for stolen vehicles, you name it. They can handle those lower-level, less significant calls. And then the third thing that I would like to talk about briefly is the proposed wage increases for the clerk, the council, and the mayor. I think that there perhaps is justification for a small raise, but the level of raises that were recommended by the commission that handles those thoughts are way out of line of what the citizens feel are realistic or can support. So I would strongly urge you to not enact the proposed wage increases for those three offices and look at something more in line with inflation and sustainability for your citizens who pay those wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, and finally, we have Linda Epling.
Hello. For the record, I'll state my name is Linda Epling, and I live in Eaton County. And that will become critical when I get up here again. But first, I'd like to say that I am concerned about the hiring of the city attorney, which is being used. This is a critical position for the city. No interview is occurring. This makes no sense to me. Even if they're the only one, you can at least have an interview. Two, the council has not sought other viable candidates. To my, also, to my knowledge, there has been no updated position description. It would appear that the new council members should be aware of what the job does and able to make changes in that particular job. Also, at this point, it does not appear, from my perspective, that anyone on the council knows exactly what it is voting for in terms of the city attorney position. What is a critical point of this position? In terms of that? What are the, what are the list of the important points of the position? What is it going to be spending most of its time on? I urge you to reject this critical appointment until a competitive process has been put in place. So far, we don't have a competitive process. There are other people, even in the city, who qualify for the city attorney position. A number of attorneys. My God, we seem to be loaded with them. Now, if you need help regarding the candidate search and appointment process, you can seek assistance from the state of Michigan Department of Civil Service. That is their whole objective, is appointments. You need to take a good look at this and stop filling positions with people that seem to get them simply because of the individuals that they know.
Thank you. Okay, that was our final speaker. So we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Bear with me, folks. There's quite a few items on here. The first resolution we have is an appointment for Jake Brower, sorry, as a Lansing appointee of the Joint Building Authority Board of Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. We have a number of tributes that were referenced earlier as part of the GLAC, NANB, PWC Awards Brunch Event. We have a tribute in recognition of Dr. Soray Eaton, recipient of the Sojourner Truth Award. We have a tribute in recognition of Dr. Paul Elam, recipient of the Frederick Douglass Award. Tribute in recognition of Dr. Carmen Thomas, recipient of Community Service Award. Tribute in recognition of Phoebe C. Ingram, recipient of the Business Excellence Award. We have a tribute in recognition of Isabella A. Nixon, recipient of the Youth on the Move Award. We have a tribute in recognition of Rena Nutler, recipient of the Youth on the Move Award. And we have a tribute in recognition of Bryce Brown, recipient of the Youth on the Move Award. We have a tribute in memory of John Wesley Flowers, a setting of a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. And that will be for May 6th. We have the setting of a public hearing on noise special permit. Michigan Department of Transportation requests to allow for work activities to take place on I-496 in US 127. We have the setting of a public hearing on a noise special permit for Hoffman Brothers requests to allow for the Michigan Avenue Reconstruction Project. We have the setting of a public hearing on the special assessment for Glimber and Commons. And this deals with trash and grass abatement. We have an Act 51 Street Certification Resolution. This deals with the Red Cedar Development,[1616.89] We have an Act 51 Street certification resolution that deals with the Red Cedar Development, Cascade Boulevard, and Red Cedar Parkway for a total length of 2,883 feet. We have a resolution of Act 51 Street decertification for various streets for a total of 1,943 feet. We have another Act 51 Street certification resolution for Riverfront Drive for a total of 1,536 feet. We have several MOUs. These are collective bargaining agreement MOUs between the city and the IAFF Local 421. One deals with the increase with ambulance incentive payment. The next deals with an option for compensatory time in lieu of overtime. The next deals with the promotion of both battalion chief and captain roles within the department. And the last deals with paramedic license requirements within certain timeframes. We also have a resolution that deals with the Lansing Fair Chance at Housing, a resolution of community funding, Junior League of Lansing brunch and walk with league, 5K race. And lastly, the claim appeal that was discussed earlier, number 2017, for Gridiron Marketing Group LLC for $900, and red tag fees at 831 North Chestnut Street. And with that, I would move the consent agenda with the understanding that Mr. Brower, should he be approved, might be on hand to be sworn in.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Mr. Brower, you want to come down?
Stand right up to the mic. Face the audience up. Turn around. Stand right over here. There you go. Perfect. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Joint Building Authority Board of Commissioners.
Of the Office of Joint Building Authority Board of Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are to resolutions action. Number 34, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So the first resolution we have is an appointment of Jim Delain as interim internal auditor. For folks that don't know, this is a charter position, critical position, one of three positions in the city, only three positions in the city of Lansing that reports exclusively and directly to the Lansing City Council. We did have a resignation, Mrs., Ms., sorry, Emily Linden, who has done an exceptional job the past couple of years, serving in that particular position, but she did notify President Garza on March 25th that she would be resigning. She followed up with an official letter and emailed the council on the 26th, and in all communication, she referenced April 5th as her last day. We, as a leadership team, along with our office management, kind of sprung into action. We have the unique kind of position right now of going through the budget. And we simultaneously, right, in addition to this idea of somebody interim to actually help us through the budget process, we also have to take a look at that position, job description. We have to post, we have to recruit, we have to test, we have to interview. There are a number of things that have to happen before we can actually put a permanent internal auditor into position. So with that said, and the fact that we are in the middle of budget, we did reach out to Jim Delain because of his past experience with the city council. So he did serve admirably for three years as internal auditor to this body. I had the opportunity at the beginning of my tenure to work with Mr. Jim Delain and found him to be incredibly responsible, responsive, knowledgeable, and always did a fantastic job. So with that being said, we did, as a committee on personnel, meet on April 4th and had some conversations with Mr. Jim Delain. Did learn that he can begin serving May 1st, which would give us about three weeks with him to kind of wrap up the budget process. He can serve through June 21st, which takes us almost to the end of the fiscal year. And again, that allows us kind of the opportunity to, in a very intentional, deliberate way, move through the process of hopefully bringing in somebody on a permanent basis. So with that said, the resolution, again, is an appointment of Jim Delain, and that would be for a temporary basis beginning May 1st and would extend through June 21st. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. We have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to the appointment of Dennis Parker, Chief Labor Negotiator.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So this is, again, resolution of an appointment. This is Dennis Parker, Chief Labor Negotiator. The appointment comes down from the mayor. We obviously are in the position of advice and consent, had some conversations with regard to this particular candidate in committee of the whole. We understand his experience with the city of Lansing, the fact that he's been a strong supporter of labor in the past, institutional knowledge, relationships, requisite relationships in place, and so for that reason, he was put forth as the candidate. So with that, I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to the noise special permit.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. This is a noise special permit. It's essentially a resolution of waiver for our noise ordinance, and this would be to allow for combined sewer overflow for the 1617 Phase 2 project. The contractor in this case is Hoffman Brothers, and they are essentially asking for a waiver of the noise ordinance on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, and this would begin April 13th and extend through November. There was, in committee city operations, a number of removal and replacement of utility pieces that were referenced, some neighborhood street work, things of that nature. And so the Public Service Department was actually supporting the request as an effort to reduce the amount of time local access for property owners is impacted. We did, in fact, hold a public hearing on this and provided for written input. We received very little in the way of input from anybody, frankly. And so with that, we did support this in committee, and so I would move the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. We have a proper motion in place. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have a resolution rejecting the termination of the elected officers' compensation commission regarding the city clerk.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. What you have before you is very similar to the same resolutions from 2021. The first one is a rejection of the proposed increase of the Lansing city clerk raise that the commission had decided upon. The current pay is $104,000. The proposal would take it to $123,600. In doing some research on this and just looking at different municipalities around the area, that would make the city clerk the highest-paid city clerk for a city of our size or bigger in the state. That includes Detroit. So the motion would be, a yes vote would be to reject the pay raise.
Okay. We have a motion?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, we have a motion. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, so this one, this one I really struggled with, with regard to all of these. And so it's certainly not personal when we have these conversations. The EOCC is contemplating the charter to look at the position, not the people in the position. And so my understanding is that with regard to some added workload related to Prop 2 and things of that nature, that they thought it was appropriate to essentially suggest a 14% raise, which is roughly $16,000 a year, just under $16,000 a year. I struggle, I struggled with this one a little bit. We did receive some written correspondence. Obviously, there were some correspondence at the podium. This is, this is, sorry, substantial raise for work, certainly, that is going to be undertaken by the office, but I do wonder if the folks within the office, the frontline workers, are receiving pay raises that are proportional to this. So I struggled, I struggled with the size of it. In having some conversation with other council members and looking at departmental heads, which is essentially what the clerk is, I don't necessarily think $120,000 is unreasonable. But again, it's the size of the raise, you know, kind of overnight. So I struggled with this one, and I just wanted to, you know, state that on the record. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional comments? Councilman Cost.
Yeah, just quickly. One of the things I wanted to address, since it's with all three of these, I realize we're only looking at one right now, and Councilmember Hussein had mentioned this, that it's not personal, but when we're looking at the positions, I think something that most people think is if we pay better in these positions, we're going to get good people that are going to run, and I don't think that's the case. The pay isn't going to make a difference. It's the dirty politics. That's why good people don't run. We need to be looking at campaign finance reform, which is the bigger question of how we get good people to run, which is, you know, going to be a state question. I think that's how you get good people to run. I don't think it's the pay. I certainly don't do this for the pay. And I, no one up here does this for the pay. We want to serve our communities. So I just wanted to get that on the record as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Cost. Any additional questions, comments? All right, seeing none. I just want to reiterate that a yes vote would be to reject and a no vote would be to, I'm sorry, a yes vote would be to reject their raise, a no vote would be to approve. With that, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Aye. All right, so I think the motion fails then. Congratulations, Bert.
The next resolution is rejecting the determinations of the EOCC regarding the mayor.
Councilman Cost.
Well, I'm sure the news stories will say it's personal, but it's not. This is the same thing, rejecting the raise. The current pay, excuse me, the current pay for the mayor is $139,610. This would raise it to $148,01112. So I would move the proposal to reject.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Yes, I've been, I've been pretty candid that in the past, I would support inflationary raises. And frankly, when you look at a 3% inflationary raise, it's a de facto pay cut when you actually consider cost of living adjustments, inflation, et cetera. And so I think, you know, to keep the purchasing power nearly what it is at this point would be appropriate, particularly when you look at, again, this is about the position, not the person. But when you look at the position, when you look at that individual being the CEO of this corporation, when you look at our general fund budget, when you look at our off-fund budget, I certainly think $148,000 is appropriate. So with that being said, I will, I will not be supporting this resolution.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional questions or comments, concerns? All right, seeing none. We do have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. All right, motion fails. So the EOCC raises, I know this is a little difficult to understand, the EOCC raises is what stands. So the 3% for the mayor so far and the additional 14% for the city clerk has also passed. So moving down?
So the next resolution is to reject the determinations of the EOCC regarding the city council.
All right, Councilman Cost.
Yeah, what you have before you is the same resolution. It would take the pay of a regular city council member from $26,356 to $27,961. So this would reject them, a yes vote would reject the raise. If this fails, then it would go into effect, I think, within whatever the timeframe is.
It would be July 1st, I think, at the start of the fiscal year. Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns? Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just, just because, because of the question, some of the comments, we should be clear that the charter contemplates an EOCC so that we are not controlling our own pay, right? It does, however, allow this body to put a resolution forth to deny what the EOCC has actually decided. So those are decisions that the EOCC has made and that they stand unless we actually put forth the resolution, elected officers' compensation commission. And so they stand unless we put a resolution forth. Again, on this one, I have, and the reason why I've rejected just about every, or moved to reject just about every raise the EOCC has, has decided on as long as I've been in this position is because they typically are above inflationary or above what our bargaining members get. And so I've always made, I've been very clear that it should never exceed, in my opinion, inflationary adjustments or what our bargaining members get, whichever is less, frankly. When you look at city council, and again, the position, and you look at the 110 committee meetings on average, when you look at, you know, really what the position calls for in terms of being out in the neighborhoods, being at meetings, meetings with the internal auditor, meetings with leadership, meetings with the city attorney, meetings with the administration, if the job is done correctly, I certainly think the current pay is appropriate. And so again, to keep the purchasing power the same and to not have a de facto pay cut, I will support inflationary raises. One of the things I've heard over and over from folks is, well, that specific council member, this specific council member doesn't deserve that raise. There is the EOCC in terms of accountability, but we should also remember that that last stopgap is the citizenry. And so if there is somebody that is, that you feel is not doing the position justice, that they're not upholding essentially the social contract that is in place with regards to city council members and their constituency, then I would highly encourage you to get out and vote them out of office. But frankly, in terms of the position and making sure that we can attract and retain within the position and compensate folks for the job that is contemplated in terms of being done with the charter, I think a 3% inflationary raise to keep the purchasing power where it's at currently is appropriate. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Do we have any additional comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Aye. All right, motion fails.
Okay, we, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That is the yellow sheet in the back, and we'll give you about another minute to sign up with tag in the back if you haven't had the opportunity. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
All right, Vice President Hussein.
Sorry, I would move that all items be considered as read and full and that appropriate referrals be made by you, President Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns, comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Fireworks display license for the 4th of July.
City operations.
And fireworks display for the lug nuts for multiple dates.
City operations.
Liquor license transfer Darlington and Bertram for 1210 South Washington Avenue.
City operations.
And a liquor license transfer for Ever Friendship to, for, at, I'm sorry, at 727 East Miller Road.
That would be city operations.
And Human Services General Fund second quarter report.
Committee of the whole.
Items for the mayor, workers' compensation settlement.
Ways and Means.
And the four collective bargaining agreement MOUs that the council has already passed.
Committee of the whole, place on file.
The appointment of Irene Cotton as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners.
Public Safety.
Appointment of Gregory S. Venker as city attorney.
Committee of the whole, place on file.
Administrative review fee for payments in lieu of taxes for workforce housing applications.
Development and planning.
Communications and petition. We have three notices from the Liquor Control Commission regarding, one is a new microbrewer and small winemaker at 1112 North Larch. One is transferring an SDD and SDM at 728 West Miller, and the other is transfer of SDD license at 5131 North Grand River Avenue.
City operations.
Affidavit of disclosure from Jamil Jones, Lansing Police Department.
Ethics board.
And communication from Sheila Contreras, objecting to the Martin Luther King Boulevard reconfiguration.
Place on file.
And affidavit of disclosure, Dennis Parker, Chief Labor Negotiator.
Ethics board.
And we are to motion of excused absence.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, I would move excused absences for both Councilmen Spatafor and Councilman Jackson.
All right, we got a proper motion in place. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any additional remarks for, from council? All right, seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
So very quickly, before they leave, I want to thank Representative Emily DeVendorf, who I know is in the doorway. Didn't have a chance to do that before. Thank you for all your hard work on behalf of the city of Lansing. It's been a wonderful working with you. I missed, when I was talking about things, we have our celebration of diversity reception on June 27th at City Hall between 4:30 and 6:00 PM. So everyone, please take note. And then also, just to publicly state, I also am supremely supportive, supremely, very supportive of this, the fair housing resolution that council passed today. I think that was a good, a good resolution. The language was good, and I really do hope the state takes that up quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Speakers have up to three minutes to address city council, and we will start tonight with Daniel Arnold, followed by Mitzi Allen.
Hi, this is Daniel Arnold. I'm here to address Mayor Shore. I noticed on the website, it says there's two vacancies for the Board of Police Commissioners. So I want to make sure that one of those is still open. I'm, I'm a tri-county CIT Crisis Intervention Team Consumer Advocate Board Member, and I have been trying to use the form online to apply for a Board of Police Commissioners position, and every time I send it to the form, it says they're going to send me a confirmation email regarding the form, and I haven't gotten any confirmation emails at all. So I would really like to meet with you, Mayor Shore, regarding this position, and I have tried to reach out to your, your scheduling coordinator. I just only did that Friday, so I haven't been trying for very long, but I'd love to meet with you, and there's just so much. I've been going to police commissioner meetings since Yan Kao, C. Green, and now Chief Sosby. They're really great people that are at that meeting, and I'd love to be a part of it. So, you know, Mayor Shore, if you could follow up with me with that. Thank you. So, you know, Mayor Shore, if you could follow up with me with that, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mitzi Allen, followed by David Ellis.
Mr. Mayor, council member, my name is Mitzi Allen, and I'm a longtime resident of the West Side neighborhood. I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed project to remove the medians on MLK from Lenaway Street to Ionia and to reduce the lanes of traffic from six to four. Firstly, I oppose this project for several reasons. The city has indicated that the residents on the west side of MLK will experience a slight reduction in home values, while those on the east side will gain additional green space, a non-connecting bike path, and special lighting. This discrepancy of benefit raises concerns about the potential favoritism towards developers in the future inasmuch as the land in back of the green spaces currently for sale. Secondly, the medians were initially installed based on an environmental impact statement from 1985, aiming to reduce noise, light glare, and provide safety for the pedestrians. Removing them could compromise the safety and well-being of residents as well as disturb the traffic calming measures in place. This change would exacerbate pedestrian safety for students walking to and from Setston, Riddle, and Willow schools. Furthermore, the remaining residents of this affected area have already endured significant changes in the past when 275 homes, several businesses, and two churches were lost due to the widening of Logan Street and the installation of the Capital Loop. These people who lost their homes were my friends, these were places I shopped. My community is desiring to see history repeating itself with little consideration for the community's well-being. The city's approach to community engagement on this issue has also been lacking. The hastily organized meetings of March lacked proper documentation, and concerns raised by residents were met with dismissiveness. There wasn't any adequate record-taking, recording, or note-taking to address the concerns, leaving residents such as myself feeling unheard of, undervalued. Mr. Mayor, you talked about postcards that you have been mailed out. Those cards will be received probably at the latest by the 10th of April. They're due back the 12th. That doesn't give residents enough time to even get them back in the mail. I got mine today, many in my neighborhood have not. Therefore, I urge the city to slow down this project and conduct further studies. Have there been recent traffic and safety assessments? What about updated environmental studies? I'm told that you no longer have to do that. Can alternative solutions be explored to minimize the negative impact of property value?
Thank you.
It's crucial for the city to prioritize the well-being and to take its time without --
Thank you.
I know. That have long-lasting effects for the residents, such as what you've done with 496.
Next, we have David Ellis, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, David Ellis, resident of downtown Lansing neighborhood. I'm actually, I'm here to, I think I put on my form budget, but I'm actually here to speak on the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard redevelopment. I have come to the city council chambers many, many, many times by now, talking about pedestrian safety, public safety, and improving urban areas, and everything about this project, looking through it, is objectively good. It is a good project. This is a great, this is, I am incredibly shocked to finally see something at the city, from the city, that I'm not recoiling in disgust from. This is, as someone who has walked to and from Setston every day for my time in high school, I'm very, very familiar with crossing Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This is a fantastic project. The current design as it stands is not safe for pedestrians, period. It has 13-foot lanes designed like a freeway with skimpy little crabapple trees dotting the median between it. This, the median, by the way, this isn't a state park we're talking about. This isn't some beautiful spot that you can go in and enjoy. This is a trash and debris-filled lump of dirt that you can't enjoy. It is nothing. It is, I'm not saying it's an eyesore, but it's not a place that people go to enjoy themselves. By readjusting the road and bringing that green space to the side of it, you can actually put a park in that people can go to and enjoy. For those unfamiliar with the redesign, they're taking it from the six planes plus one turn lane down to four lanes plus the one turn lane, which will also be a median throughout it. You're bringing crossing distances down from 52 feet to 22 feet. Total width of the road will unfortunately have to increase from 52 to 55 feet, which let's be real here, that's a three-foot increase. That's not going to kill anything. But overall, the entire right-of-way itself is being reduced from up to 230 feet down to the 55 feet. So this is going to be a narrower road. This is restoring acres and acres of land back to the downtown neighborhood where it originally was, so it can be redeveloped. There are absolutely valid, 100% valid concerns about what will happen with this land, and I want to make sure that we stay on top of it and make sure it doesn't become luxury housing that no one can afford. I want to make sure that this land, if redeveloped, becomes back to its original use of land affordable to average people to live on. This is a good thing. This is a fantastic, fantastic project, and I am hoping to see it go through as designed submitted to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Dan Beard.
Well, I just happened to check my phone while we were listening to other speakers, and I learned that the Lansing State Journal just ran an article a couple of hours ago mentioning that four city council members, Ryan Coast, Tamara, Trinny, and Jeffrey, have sent a letter to the mayor saying that they will not support selling, or moving city hall from here to the Masonic Temple unless and until there is an appropriate bid process in place and executed. So I want to thank them for their thoughtful and conservative decisions and their strength of character and their integrity in holding up to that process. The citizens as a whole agree with that, and that's what we want to see. We want to see a fair bid. We want to see an open, transparent bid. We want to see a bid that doesn't put us in a building that's older than the one we're leaving. It makes no sense to say that we can't afford to fix a 50-year-old city hall, but we can afford to fix a 100-year-old city hall. That just doesn't add up. And having toured the Masonic Temple, I can tell you from my personal experience that although the facade is interesting and architecturally significant, the interior is strongly not. There was nothing redeemable about the interior of that building. It was a rabbit warren of hallways and walls and build-outs. When you think about what the support walls, you're talking seven floors. So you're going to have some pretty significant structural support walls that are going to have to stay in place, no matter what your designer or your architect comes up with, and that's going to increase costs. Also, if you think in terms of using some floors and then later renting out the other floors and having the other occupants develop them on their own dime and time, how do you run a city hall for three or four floors ongoing with construction above it for three or four floors? That would be just an untenable situation overall. So I think you made a wise choice. I'm glad you stood strong, and keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dan Beard, followed by Kokoka.
Monday, March 25th, at 8:00 PM, my neighbor slammed on my door and wall repeatedly, yelling at the top of his lungs he would kill me. LPD said, "No one was coming because the neighbor has mental issues and guns." Seems that if you have mental issues and guns, you have the right to threaten and harass. And if you are the victim, your only effective right is to flee. There wasn't even a drive-by, no check-in the next day, no assurance if I fled that I'd been enabled to come back. Two calls to LPD complaints lines have not even been answered. This hardly seems like serve and protect. Just imagine this had happened to the police chief, the mayor, city councilperson, or Donald Trump. Same response? Don't make me laugh. Have to wonder why I paid my property taxes for 44 years. I think non-protected seniors should get some kind of a tax rebate to provide gas money for finding a community which takes harassment and kill threats seriously, or to help them fund private security, like a bar bouncer maybe. If LPD doesn't have training to actually do something in these kinds of situations, then they should get some soon. Demonstrating to my neighbor again and again that I am expendable certainly increases the odds that I will be Lansing's first 2024 homicide. In honor, I'd just as soon skip. When I go home tonight, wish me luck, because LPD apparently doesn't give a. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kokoka, followed by Luna Brown.
Good evening, I'm Steve Kokoka, live at 810 La Grande. The reason why I'm here tonight is I've been hearing about the homelessness, and I was, I didn't know that was happening, and I'm here on a whole different topic, kind of. But I did 18 years in prison, and I am a success story, a complete success. I started out, like I was telling Rachel over here about, that I started out riding a bicycle around Lansing to see how Lansing really was back in the day, or whatever. It's been five years since I've been out, and what's happened is I've overgrown the area that I lived in, that I live in currently, with my business because of equipment and trailer and maybe a truck or two. And I'm having a lot of trouble with the zoning commission of the city right now, and they gave me a 30-day extension to find a property to put my equipment on to run my business because they said I was going against the ordinance for running a business in residential. And I think, you know, my opinion is some of them, some of the businesses need to be maybe overlooked a little bit. I just, for instance, my business is a tree business, and I haven't done anything in that area to cause any conflict, any traffic jams, any injuries to people. I've actually cleaned up the area, maybe that's what the problem is, because the city's so used to having areas that are down to keep them down. And I'm the type of person that wants to put an area, wherever I live, it's going to go up. It's going to, the value is going to go up. I keep the street clean, I pick up the trash, you don't have to have a special group of people to get together to go pick trash up. I do it myself. You know what I mean? And hopefully, people follow that suit. And all I asked when you were talking was what that acronym meant. That's all I asked. I don't, most of us don't know what's going on back here. You know what I mean? So just show some respect, dude. I show you respect, I show the mayor's respect, because there's another Steve Kokoka too, that was, that was, before he got released, did 18 years. I wasn't a nice guy. And, you know, you guys are putting the foot on my neck now, and I'm trying to make it. I'm a success story. I have established business. I don't have to worry about anything. I don't have to worry about a pay raise, whoever's needing a pay raise. I don't worry about none of that. I worry about my business and taking care of my family, and that's the number-one thing. And I don't hear none of that about where you would come from with family. And like today, we were talking about the eclipse real quick, I got 24 seconds. It was, it was finally like a group of, like everybody together had something in common today. We all were, we all seen this eclipse, or all were involved. It was a good thing, it was a positive thing. You know, let's stop being negative towards each other. Let's start, you know, this is my city, I'm not going nowhere. I'm going to be here. Matter of fact, I might even choose to run for mayor one day, just because. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Luna Brown, followed by Linda Epling.
I'd like to bring up again that this is Autism Acceptance Month, and I'm going to emphasize acceptance over awareness because we're beyond that now. One in 36 children are now diagnosed as autistic, and we as a city need to make sure that our city is safe for people who are autistic like myself. I have extreme sensory processing issues, and one thing that's very hard on me living in Lansing is the, not just the 4th of July, but kind of the weeks surrounding 4th of July. And I used to honestly support legalizing fireworks and allowing them in the city and everywhere, but after living in the city and moving to Lansing, I realized that that's maybe not right for everywhere in Michigan. Because like, literally, it's like a war zone during the 4th of July, and this, it's not only people with sensory processing issues that are affected, but our veterans and police officers who have PTSD are being affected by this, our pets are being affected by this. And it is very difficult. I literally had no way to escape the city last year, so I spent the 4th of July at a friend's house curled up in the fetal position because I didn't feel safe being home alone because of how bad like this stuff affects me. And I don't feel like I should have to leave the city to have some peace during those weeks surrounding that holiday. Like, and that's where I'm at now. Like, I literally, I'm planning to try and find a way to escape the city during the 4th of July because I can't tolerate it again. You know? I can't get a doctor to approve me for a special script of like anti-anxiety meds just to curl up in a fetal ball, fetal position again on my friend's couch because I don't, I don't know why we have to put up with that. Like, this is, seems like it should be a simple issue. I don't know too many people who really enjoy having these explosions going off constantly. I'm fine with fireworks displays, you know? Firework displays are great, they're in pre-planned locations, they're controlled. I can avoid them, and I can learn where they're happening and actively avoid them. When literally every neighborhood in the city is exploding for days on end, there's no escape for me. And I think this is something like, it's Autism Acceptance Month. This is something that can help our community and others even outside of our community, and I think it's worth looking into because I know I'm not the only one. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Epling, followed by Walker.
Hello, once again, this thing, can you hear me with this? I don't know. Hmm? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, hello, my name is Linda Epling, and I reside in the city of Lansing, Eaton County. I think it's very critical that you know that I am in Eaton County. I was perusing the city's tech sites, and one of the things I noted on the city's header page is that you don't even bother to include Eaton County. All you have is Ingham County. And I would question why. I mean, we do pay taxes. I know you send me nasty bills all the time if I don't pay them. You also do the same in terms of the trash pickup. I find this totally unacceptable. I find it unacceptable that the city of Lansing cannot include Eaton County, that all you're including is Ingham County. Why? Why have you forgotten us? You do not forget us when it's time to pay taxes. I notice that you do manage to get that out to Eaton County residents that live in the city of Lansing. Thus, I am very disappointed. And I do think that if you cannot at least include Eaton County, on the headers for the city of Lansing, why don't you give us back our tax money? In terms of that. I would also like to say that I did hear Ms. Allen discuss the upcoming changes in MLK. I've lived in that area before, and I have to agree with her. I do not support those changes. I do not support those changes, even though I'm no longer there and I live in Eaton County down the road. I definitely don't support those changes. And I would point out that Ms. Allen was given substantially less time than another gentleman that stood up here and talked about, I think it was a housing problem. And I find that unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Walker, followed by Willie Hobbs.
Good evening, gentlemen. He's back again. I had the issue I wanted to address, and I'm gonna address this very briefly. I wanted to address the issue of Granger and their billing practices, where people in Lansing are having to pay for service from Granger. A while ago, I was talking to someone in the city, and they were talking about maybe the city getting out of trash removal. After looking at a Granger bill, I pray you don't do that. The issue was that a lady terminated her service with Granger. So Granger charged her $60 to come pick up the trash can. And then they charged her $20 for contract obligation. In other words, she ended her contract on the Fourth of the month, and they wanted to charge her for the rest of the month. I've sent a copy of that to several of the members, to the council, and I'll give you a chance to look at that. So now I'm gonna move on to MLK. I lived on MLK when Kalamazoo Street School was operative. I walked the streets of MLK when it was Logan Street. I went to Union Baptist Church when it was on Logan Street, not by Logan Street. It was a small building. I went to elementary school, I went to Sexton High School, I went to West Junior High School. Now we have these islands of green there. They're not hurting nobody. You guys wanna make a big change there, because there's money to deal with streets. So you wanna tear up the streets just to get the money. And I don't know who the contract is going to, or why. There's boulevards all the way down from the other side of Morris River Drive, all the way down to, well, I think it's, well, the railroad tracks. But yet and still, nobody talking about tearing them up. The situation is actually quite simple. Where are the studies that show this area is accident prone? Somebody spoke about the problems of crossing the street. Then the question becomes, where are the studies to show this? By way of this conversation, I'm giving you a verbal FOIA for a copy of those surveys, the studies. And that's on record now, my verbal FOIA. Let's not be changing stuff just to spend money when it's needed someone else. And I do hope you appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Willie Hobbs, and then Heidi Fry.
Excuse me. Got some mail here. Will you get it to the mouth, please? Hello, how y'all doing? This too. I spoke on this before, when I was down here. There's something going on wrong with that letter and the stuff that they took out of my yard. I showed you some pictures of them trucks. Two trucks came to my yard, empty. Now that's what they left with. Ain't none of them items, none of them, none of them items on that letter is on them pictures. And I got some more pictures, 'cause this is, this is just the beginning of this. I don't wanna be homeless. I've been working all my life. I came up from Mississippi, from a shell cropper, made a little bit of money, put it in me old house. I don't know who around here want my house, they're working for the city. But I'm starting getting phone calls asking, they right here on my phone, asking me do I wanna sell my property, 1217. Now, I'm gonna start cleaning up around my property. I'm gonna clean up around my property. My property ain't for sale. The city done charged me taxes for rental property. I don't know how many years. I wouldn't have known they did it if it hadn't been my state representative got involved. Now, I'm asking for help. I know right from wrong, and that's not just what Cold Complain Company did. Now somebody need to fix it, 'cause I'm not sleeping good at night. I swear, well, God, I ain't playing. I done worked, they messed over my daddy, my mama, down there in the state of Mississippi. The government, TruTruck Clan, and all the other white folk who run these plantations. The government done fell us, and look like my city fell them into. I done paid property taxes, supposed to be rental property. They told me, Zep, we'll pay you two, or three years back, before we can go. It's three years back. How many years I done paid? It wasn't supposed to pay. Give me that money back, you done add all that price. Cold Complain Company took my stuff and loaded it up real neat, so they can resell it and then put a price on my taxes for almost $4,000. Who gonna pay it? I already overpaid the city for rental property. I stay in my house. I don't be there that much. My kid there.
Thank you. Next is Heidi Fry, followed by...
Man, I need to talk to you.
I can't read the first name, but the last name's Walker.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. My name's Heidi Fry. I'm a member of the West Side Neighborhood Board Association and a 20-year resident of the West Side Neighborhood. I own property one block west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. I'm here to express non-support for the proposed redesign of that, of Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, for the reasons of lacking data and not having clear objectives for this project. I also want to express non-support for the use of city funds that would remove remediation that was installed at the time that those boulevards were put in to keep my community safe. We've heard tonight some folks expressing and discounting the value of those lands. This project seeks to remove two acres of green space and transfer those benefits, the green benefits, across the street to the east side, where there are no residents and there is little benefit to the West Side Neighborhood. However, what that will do is concentrate all lanes of traffic to the adjacent neighbors in my neighborhood, removing the boulevards and the 100, nearly 100 trees in that area. These trees, per the city's own tree equity plan, are located in an area with 15% canopy cover. This is an area that the city has identified as having the highest need for tree planting. Now, this project has promised replacement of trees at a one-to-one. We know that trees planted in an urban area have a very tough time. Only about 60 to 70% of those trees will live. We also know that it'll take a full 30 to 40 years for them to reach the maturity they are now and give those benefits to the residents of my neighborhood, including my children and the students at Sexton High School Riddle and the children that utilize LETS Community Center. Beyond that, it is documented through the environmental impact statements that were conducted by the city of Lansing and the state of Michigan, that those boulevards were put in place to mitigate the dangerous levels of noise that were documented at that time that the boulevards were put in. We do know that those, the traffic levels remain the same, and per the letter I received from the city today, there is an indication that those levels would increase in the coming years. So this project is proposing to put all of that traffic, all of that noise, all of the potential for environmental hazards adjacent to residential neighborhoods, and no one really can tell why. We also do know from the reports, from the environmental impact statements, that these areas were documented to be much safer, particularly for children, elderly, and those not able to cross. I'm out of time. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have someone whose last name is Walker, followed by Deborah Mulcahy.
Hello. I'm your West Side spokesperson. As you see, my neighbors are here. Everybody's uneased. You guys came in, back in the 90s, you guys came and took our land for pennies on the dollar. You know, a lot of families was forced out of their home with that eminent domain thing by you, not this actual body, the Hollister body. But, and now all of a sudden, you guys don't need this beautiful boulevard that we gave up our homes for. And it's sad. You know what I mean? It's sad. And so I'm just wondering, what are you guys' plans to right the wrongs of the people before you? Because we're looking for our check. We want our, we're looking for our check. You guys stole a lot of homes with that eminent domain stuff. A lot of people was forced out of their homes that were paid for, they had to start over with mortgages. That was wrong. And you guys have the power to right that wrong of this city, Mr. Shore. And so to go back and put it back the way that it was originally was, and just have the land without all the homes, the families? I grew up over there. I shopped at Busy Bee. My church was on Washnoff Street. I lived on Linaway Street. And y'all forced us, y'all forced us out of there, this city. Those black people wasn't trying to give their homes away, they were forced with the eminent domain. Y'all need to right y'all wrongs, man. You feel me? I mean, cut that check. Cut that check to these, to, my ancestors, they all, and the sad part about it, a lot of them dead now. They done died off. Cut that check.
Thank you. Next is Deborah Mulcahy, followed by Sheila Contreras.
Oh, excuse me. Somebody's fault. Procedural issue, do you guys not do second for a motion? And do you not do, you don't do second for motion and you don't do roll call? Okay. Deborah Mulcahy, West Sider. The history of Lansing moving residents out of our community, you've heard, in the 70s, 50 years later, it's continuing in what you're doing. Don't let anyone fool you, the medians do not need to have water mains installed in them. Please stop the actions that are proceeding at this date and time. Lansing has failed the transparency test. The city of Lansing public service staff have learned that residents were not happy, so then they had some meetings. We've never had what you and I might call a facilitated communication, community meeting, where we sit down and we share, this is what we want, this is what we think, these are our ideas. Not happened. The meeting in the trees, they have a purpose. You've already heard that. How do you get the right to say federal and state monies were spent for those mitigation, and you're gonna take them out? I think not. Maybe you guys forgot, the city of Lansing wrote those environmental documents. Maybe you forgot, maybe you didn't know, maybe you thought we'd all be dead, but here we are. We shouldn't be discussing the remediation, removal of the medians in the trees. They were designed there for a purpose. Look at those documents. 30 years later, we're talking about noise pollution. That noise pollution didn't go away. Lansing doesn't get to ignore the fact that federal and state monies were used. What am I asking for? I'm asking for transparency, honesty, and community engagement. The distribution of traffic data and analysis, where is it? Where's the justification? I was told publicly, the 21st of March, it'd be available. I made a FOIA request. Now they want me to come in and pay for it. Time to evaluate the data, a sit-down with the community, all the parties involved, and discuss this, the safety, the traffic safety, the speed, all the environmental issues. The forum should be facilitated by someone who knows how to do facilitated forums, meetings. Have a directive from you, Mr. Mayor, to the public service staff, that you will listen, they will listen to the citizens, engage them, continue ongoing dialogue for these facilitated meetings, provide updates. I'm tired of fighting with the city on this issue. I'm gonna tell you, you're not gonna win, because there's no way in the world you're gonna prevail over taking state and federal money for mitigation that was spent and say, no medians. It's not gonna happen. Why don't we spend in time, instead, time on creative projects for this community to move forward, instead of fighting? Because, as I said, I'm tired of fighting. And no offense, I don't wanna really see you guys anymore on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Sheila Contreras, followed by Norma Bauer.
Hi, thank you. This is the new urban removal, what some people call a lump of dirt, I'd call people's hopes and dreams. I heard of someone, their house is still sitting on Kalamazoo Street. They have to see it. They have to see the house they were forced to sell and move out of, sitting there vacant. Anyway, so it does occur to me, I think all of this is related, the Nation Outside stuff, Nation Outside, Stand With Nation Outside. So it does occur to me to ask about process, and, you know, such as who in the neighborhood is receiving the postcard ballots? How does that get decided? What are the boundaries of the population that is empowered to vote here, that is enfranchised? Because not everybody knows about it, not everybody is getting postcards, and we can't really make sense of who gets them. Additionally, I think residents have to be well-informed about the issue you're putting before them. When they started planning this in the 1970s, they brought in experts, they did noise studies, they did, you know, like air quality studies, they did lots of studies through the 70s into the 80s about this, right? And that's how they came up with the medians. They were installed as landscaped noise barriers, that's from the draft environmental impact statement, 1977. They were carefully conceived as a response to citizen concerns. At the time, in mid-1970s, Logan Street noise levels had already reached the point where abatement was needed. So, and we've seen detailed drawings of the medians that were designed to absorb noise light and contribute oxygen. Removing the medians will not lessen or calm traffic. They're more than simply landscape architecture, they play a vital role in community health. Let me see, a lot of people have said, the conditions that the medians were designed to mitigate have not gone away. So to remove the berms would be to expose the surrounding residential community to pollution from which it has been protected for almost 30 years. Removal of the medians will increase noise light, air pollution. The lanes will be more narrow and closer to people's homes. It will make it easier for random drivers because of the direct lefts. We don't understand why direct lefts are important into our neighborhood. No pedestrian focused studies is just like really scary. The removal of the median should not be an option, because they provide a significant mitigation of adverse environmental factors brought on by vehicular traffic. The city of Lansing designed and installed them to protect the people. What has changed? And they did this with the Federal Highway Administration. They wrote, the statement was written together, signed by city urban planner and the FHA, or whatever they're called, not the FHA, but. So let's put community health and safety first, keep the medians, install additional crossings, update the signals, improve lighting. Can't we use Act 51 money for that instead? And let's make the city of Lansing stand out for its memorial to Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norma Bauer, followed by Mike Lynn.
Okay, so if you don't want Lansing Council meetings to go till almost 10 o'clock so far, then notice that maybe the people don't like what's happening in Lansing. And so maybe it's time to change things. And I'm happy to report that I know of another capital city about the size of Lansing who has instituted a district-wide free transit program. And I know that there's a guy in Lansing who knows darn well how to collaborate to get other jurisdictions to collaborate. He played a key role in the creation of the Capital Area District Library. So we're not limited to three libraries that are located in the city of Lansing. We can go out to Oakham, Miss Williamson, Hazlet. We can get books from the Melcat, all over the state. And so he knows how to collaborate, he knows how to pull things together across districts. And his name is Randy... And his name is Randy Diquist. And I hope he follows the Lansing Charter Review Commission a lot, so we can get that. And I'm making progress on talking to the people at the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission about how this other city did it. Because they've got chapter and verse about exactly how. And as far as Mr. Swope's raise, I think there's a lot of things you could do simpler, like setting five months after the vote to change the charter until the Charter Review Commission only has five months left, a little over five months left, to review the city charter, make changes, or throw the whole thing out and try something new based on whatever the Michigan Municipal League says, present it to the voter, get it approved. Because of course, you gotta set another election for that. And that's costly. That's really costly. And, you know, there's all kinds of other things, like changing the place where you can vote. So many times, you know, from Washington Street to Rio Road to some Baptist church somewhere and then telling them that the schools are not gonna let you vote there at the schools. It's, that's a very expensive way to do things. And the fire department shortage. My nephew was an inmate felon in the state of California. Trained him to become a licensed firefighter. And I think maybe they could do that here. So, and I also saw that when I went to the committee of the whole, that there's gonna be all kinds of city meetings on May 8th and 10th and 11th. I didn't catch what or why or who. But could that possibly be because of the election about the city charter commission on May 7th? You know? It's like there's a whole lot of things going on that are gonna keep you from hearing what the people have to say. Well, we're saying it right now, all night. And they've been saying it. Every time we come, we say, we don't like it. We don't like it. We don't like it. We need to look at the charter. Listen.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mike Lynn.
So real quick, I have to touch back on the raises. I thought that was a for sure, gonna get cut down. I'm just blown away. You guys talked about the position needing to raise. Well, when the position is doing their job, then give them the raise. This current administration ain't doing the job. So why would you give them that type of raise, man? That's crazy. You just took $150,000 out of his budget where he pays everybody else to do his work. And then you gave that position a raise? Beyond me. And you guys need to start holding votes that we can see what's going on, man. This, this under your breath, yes, no's, this needs to be in print. I want to know which one of y'all did this. Outside of that, though, I just, I think you guys lack vision. I just really do. And I think that, when I keep talking about I grew up on the South Side, you can't play me, it's because I think everybody trying to play me. I think every single individual comes in front of me is trying to play me. So I'm looking at you from a perspective of what are you trying to get over with? And y'all all look through like everything is rainbows and sunshine. And, you know, I'm gonna accept this because it's from face value, this is what they're telling me. And I just don't understand that. I don't understand that perspective, that every time somebody, a developer or anybody who like has everything to gain from you just listening to them and what they have to say, y'all go for it. Like, I don't get it. And then there's certain times when you don't, like the Bozy Group stuff. And they send that email like, wow, what? I don't, it just don't make no sense to me sometimes. Like, none of it makes sense. Outside of that, you guys just, you know, putting Dennis Parker into that position, I don't think you guys know what a labor negotiator does. I do. Because when I was coming to the city of Lansing's HR department with my complaints of racism and discrimination, I had to go to that person. And it was Nicholas Tate. I didn't know he worked inside the city attorney's office. I didn't know he worked directly for the mayor when I was going to complain about those individuals. Right? So you need to know what these positions are before you put somebody like that there. Now, all of these people who that person was, their president and their negotiator is not working for the city. He knows all of their inside stuff. He knows everything about them. You wonder why the mayor would want this person there? Like, seriously, y'all don't see any, y'all don't have any foresight to see if somebody's trying to play y'all? Why do you think he would want the person he's been fighting against in his office? Come on, man. Let me gather my shit here. You guys putting this, you know, so the MOU for the fire department, this is something that fire administration, especially black fire administration, has been fighting tooth and nail to not allow happen, that you guys mandate paramedics. Because we don't get in if that's the truth. There's so many life experiences and life things that happen that people that come from environments like I did just can't go to paramedic school on top of everything else, or maybe raising kids or whatever the case is. I would have never been able to be a firefighter had I had to go to paramedic school. People that I hired in with had to quit because they were forced to do that process. And it wasn't legal when they did it. Now you all just made it legal. Even if it's just until 2026. But once it becomes a proper function in here, they'll raise this every single contract and it'll just be. So there's no forethought in that and how that's gonna be equitable to people of color. There's so much more, man. But you guys can watch America for that. Now, I'm gonna have all that group on since they didn't give y'all time to speak. We're gonna get this stuff out.
Thank you.
All right. See you. No further business. Word adjourned.